Mike, check for the YouTube stream.
Good morning, everybody. Sorry about the delay. My name is Nancy Omen and I will be chairing today's Scarborough Committee of Adjustment hearing. Panel members joining me today are Eric Howe, Asif Khan, Anne McCauley, and David Stinson. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Williams Treaty signed with multiple Mississaugas and Chipewa bands. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person and others will participate virtually through WebEx, which today is not working, so we're doing it a little bit different. We have the large view of all the members there and I don't believe, maybe staff can correct me, are we going to be able to see any applicants that are online on video? In this here?
Chair, yes.
Yep, okay, so you will be able to see any applicants that have requested to be on video. The meetings are streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel and anyone wishing to view the hearing can watch on YouTube. Those who chose to participate virtually and registered in advance will be connecting by video or audio. All virtual participants will automatically be muted upon entry and when their item is called, they will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you mute your devices until you are called upon to speak. Those participating by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when their item is called and during this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your allotted speaking time or to answer questions. At all other times, your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating via WebEx are not allowed to use the share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the committee's decision on an application must fill out a decision request card and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for the decision by email. Please include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email only. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body known as T-Lab or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired, and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the agent or applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other supporting materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today and the committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure that the revisions are accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers and this will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Um, I'd like panel members' confirmation of the minutes from the last meeting. Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, do I have a second there?
Thank you, Chair. I will second the motion.
So the motion to adopt the minutes is moved by Mr. Stinson, seconded by Mr. Howe. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Are there any declarations of interest by panel or staff this morning? No? Okay, see, none. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed or are there any deferrals this morning?
Through the chair, there are no files to be closed. Seven deferral requests for the morning session. The first two are items number one and number two, one oh three B and one oh three A Pine Grove Avenue. Deferral at the request of the applicant in order to address issues raised by community planning.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience here for one oh three A and one oh three B Pine Grove Avenue? Okay, do we have the applicant on the line?
I'm the agent for the one oh three A and one oh three B Pine Grove Avenue.
Hi, sir. What's your name?
My name is Mregesh Roy.
And your address?
Ninety Vanbrook Avenue, Scarborough.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're asking for a deferral?
Yes, I am asking for a defer.
And why do you need a deferral, sir?
We received some comments by the planning and the owners decided to rework on the design.
Okay, thank you. Staff, just to confirm, there's nobody else online for this item? Okay, um, so panel members were in committee on the deferral. Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move deferral of item number one and two on the grounds that the applicant wishes to speak to community planning to address their concern.
Okay, and Ms. McCauley?
I will second those motions for one and two.
Okay, I have a motion to defer this item to the next available hearing and this is moved by Mr. Howe, seconded by Ms. McCauley and that's for items number one and two, one oh three A and B Pine Grove Avenue.
Through the chair, the third deferral request is item number six.
Hang on, we didn't vote on it yet.
I'm sorry.
All right, all in favor? Okay, that carries. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So the third deferral request for the morning session is item number six, thirty-one oh one Kennedy Road, deferral at the request of the applicant in order to address concerns raised by community planning.
All right, um, let's see. Is there anybody in the audience for thirty-one oh one Kennedy Road? Seeing none? Um, is there anyone other than the agent here online for item six? Okay, and do we have the agent on the line? Okay.
Yes.
Hi, could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Hey, my name is Yong Yu. I am the engineer of thirty-one oh one Kennedy Road. Yeah.
Okay, sir, you're asking for a deferral? Is that to address planning concerns?
That is correct, because I got the committee plan staff report last week, so it is already saying that the pet grooming shop is, would be rejected. So please, the plan will change the, change it to the other usage as a retail shop or whatever, and that's why please help to defer this case to the next Committee of Adjustment. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Panel members were in committee on the deferral.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, I just want to point out that all the director of community planning is recommending a refusal. I have no problem giving a deferral, so I could move. I believe this matter should be deferred.
So you are, okay, all right. Do I have a second or for the motion, Ms. McCauley? Okay, motion to defer thirty-one oh one Kennedy to address planning concerns, and that's moved by Mr. Stinson, seconded by Ms. McCauley. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Go ahead.
The fourth deferral request is for item number eleven, one Broderick Place, deferral at the request of the applicant in order to address concerns raised by community planning.
Okay, um, just give me a second. You the agent, sir? Please bear with me. All right, is there anyone in the audience here for one Broderick Place? Pretty much half, I think half of you. Okay. Um, all right, sir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good morning. My name is Felix Leicher from thirty-three Fernwood Park Avenue, Toronto.
Okay, and you're asking for a deferral, sir?
Yeah, we're asking for deferral to address the planning concerns.
Okay, and I believe there's also forestry concerns, no?
Forestry has no concerns. They just want a permit application standard procedure. TRCA is, doesn't have any concerns either.
Okay, I believe forestry is asking to refuse the application, so perhaps you want to go back and review what forestry is sending. All right, um, are there any people? I'm assuming there are people online too for this application, or no?
I don't speak to it.
Um, okay, we have one person online. Okay, we're only speaking to the deferral, sir, so it's basically a yes or a no question. Okay, um, what's your name, please? I'll just see if you're on the speakers list here.
I am on the list. My name is Jeffrey Ty from thirteen Broderick Place. I'm on the same street as the subject property. I'm here speaking for myself and for most of my neighbors who are present. It's our position that all the documents required to hear this matter are already filed. We're already here. The whole street is here, and quite frankly, we believe that this matter should proceed today, or the applicant should be required to fully withdraw the application. We don't see the point of a deferral.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, can you just give me the person that's online, please? Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, can I have your name and address, please?
Yes, Amit Chakrabarti from Seven Moro Trail, Scarborough.
Okay, sir, um, also same question to you, to the deferral only.
Um, I would say yes, because if the owner wants to review the projects to see if they want to change the plan, and that may be suitable, so I'm okay with the deferral request.
Thank you, sir. Panel members, do you have any questions of the agent, Mr. Leider?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Sir, just to be clear for the record, this is the first deferral you've requested?
Correct.
Thank you.
Panel members, do you have any other questions? All right, so we'll take it into committee. You've heard the member of the community speak on behalf of the people who are here, person online, and Mr. Leider. Any comments?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to just say that this committee is very well aware of entities that might try to game the system, therefore ask for delays unnecessarily, and we as committee members don't like to see that happen to our city overseers. Having said that, I am not convinced at all that this is that situation, so I'm comfortable deferring the matter considering that the urban forestry has already suggested that they could work with the agent here. That's just my opinion.
Any other comments, Ms. McCauley?
I see that community planning is recommending refusal. There are a number of objections from the councillor and from the people in the audience. However, I think we need to give the applicant the due process for the opportunity to revise his application, knowing that there are objections, and have another hearing. So I'm in support of a deferral to give the applicant an opportunity to revise or even to remove his application.
Okay, thank you. I'll just add, if the deferral is granted, Mr. Leider, I hope that you can perhaps meet with some of the members of the community and after you make any potential revisions, or even if, you know, whatever, but that you meet with the community, perhaps you can speak outside of this room, gets an address to follow up with perhaps the person that spoke, and avoid any objections with any revisions you make. So that's my suggestion to you. And with that, I'm going to take it into committee, and I'll need a motion from somebody, Ms. McCauley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move a deferral of this application. That will be deferral, sign and die, and so there'll be a no hearing sometime in the future. We don't have a date.
Okay, do I have a second or for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, have a motion to defer moved by Ms. McCauley, seconded by Mr. Howe. All in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously, and thank you, everyone, for coming out. I thought this gentleman spoke on behalf of all of you, is what he said. Okay, um, are there any other deferrals?
Through the chair, the fifth deferral request for the morning session is item number twelve, sixteen Homestead Road, deferral at the request of the applicant in order to address concerns raised by urban forestry.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience for sixteen Homestead Road? Anyone online other than the agent?
Through the chair, can we hold on one second?
Sure.
Sorry, through the chair, Jonathan is online.
Mr. Vankowski, are you there?
Good morning. Are you able to hear me, committee?
I can. Okay, just need your name and address for the record and why you want the deferral.
Jonathan Vankowski, three zero one Kiwattan Avenue, to address the concerns of forestry.
Okay, thank you. All right, panel members, I believe I already asked, is there anybody in the audience for sixteen Homestead? No? Okay, we're in committee on the deferral. Ms. McCauley?
Thank you. Um, I took a look at this application, and it's interesting that urban forestry has identified a huge silver maple tree in the adjacent property which impacts on this, and therefore I think, yes, we should give a deferral for the, give the opportunity for the applicant to talk to urban forestry and determine how he wishes to proceed. So I recommend deferrals against sign and die.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second or? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. I will second the motion.
Okay, motion to defer moved by Ms. McCauley, seconded by Mr. Howe. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, next deferral.
The sixth deferral of the morning session is island number thirteen, nineteen twenty-five Victoria Park Avenue, deferral at the request of the applicant in order to correctly identify all of the required variances.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience for nineteen twenty-five Victoria Park Avenue? Okay, do we have the agent on the line?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Are you able to hear me?
I can. Just need your name and address.
Yes, it's Peter Gross at Gowing WLG. I am counsel for the applicant, Terrace Manager Limited, and as the Secretary Treasurer has mentioned, we are seeking a deferral till the December third meeting in order to identify issues that were raised by a plan, by zoning notice dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. This is the first request.
Okay, thank you. Panel members were in committee, so this is to defer the matter to the December third meeting for the reasons stated. I'll need a motion, Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. I think this meets all the criteria for deferral, and I recommend and support the motion that we defer this matter to the next date.
Okay, do I have a second or?
Thank you, Chair. I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion to defer to the December third meeting moved by Mr. Stinson, seconded by Mr. Howe. All in favor? That carries unanimously. I already got it. Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Through the chair, the very last deferral request for the morning is item number fourteen. It is forty-nine Victoria Park Avenue, deferral at the request of the applicant due to a personal matter. The applicant is not online, but they have submitted a deferral request, which is in your agenda packages. So if the committee so wishes, you can proceed.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience for forty-nine Victoria Park Avenue? Seeing none online? Is there?
Through the chair, sorry to interrupt. The other reason for the deferral is because the applicant did not post their sign in accordance with Planning Act requirements.
Um, is there anyone online for this application? No? Okay, so we'll take the matter into committee. This is to defer the item for the reasons stated by the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. I'll need a motion. Mr. Khan?
Uh, move this application, we defer, sign and die.
Okay, uh, do I have a second or? Ms. McCauley, so motion to defer is moved by Mr. Khan, seconded by Ms. McCauley. All in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. That's it for the morning? All right. So we're going to start, just give me one second. Item number three. Okay, item number three, thirty-four Castor Crescent. Committee has before it public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, an arborist report prepared by DA White Tree Care, trees, tree and site photos. We have reports with conditions of approval from forestry. I believe they're asking for condition number one, and ten form letters in support from residents on Castor Crescent and Pegasus Trail. And I'm not seeing any speakers other than the agent. See agent here? Okay, anyone in the audience for thirty-four Castor Crescent? Seeing none? Nobody other than the agent? All right, is the agent on? Online?
Through the chair, Alex, you are requested to unmute.
Mr. Chow, are you there?
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Hi, sir, can I, sir, do you have something running in the background? Can you turn it off? It's echoing.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Alexander Chow, and my address is forty-five Guljay Boulevard. Hello.
All right, sir, we have one variance before us. Panel members, do you have any questions? I don't think we need a presentation on this one.
No, I think it's very straightforward to, to close the compots, so, and with all the labor support, yeah, I have no, not other material to present today.
All right, I don't, we don't have any questions for you. We're just going to take it into committee unless there's something you want to add that we don't have already in our materials.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, panel members were in committee. Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. For item three, I find that this to be minor in nature, and with ten letters of support and moving from a front yard setback of seven point three six meters to six point zero seven, I think it's definitely a minor variation, so I would move to approve this application.
Okay, do I, Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion to approve the application with forestry, with forestry condition number one, Mr. Stinson?
And forestry condition number one.
Okay, and that motion is seconded by Mr. Khan. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Your application's approved. Okay, item number four, forty-five Thora Avenue. We have before us public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, a revised diagram, OLT-approved diagram, and decision. We have an arborist report prepared by a consulting arborist, landscape, architects, and a cover letter from the agent, advisory information, no objections from Metro Links. Is there anybody in the audience for forty-five Thora? Are you the agent?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there anyone online for this application? Okay, thank you. Can I just have your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. My name is Sean McGaffey, Senior Associate, WND Associates, forty-seven Rose Lawn Avenue, Toronto, Ontario, M four R one E five.
Okay, thank you, sir. Panel members, does anybody need a presentation? Ms. McCauley? Can you, yeah?
Yes, please. Could I have a very brief presentation? If you would address the building uses, are you doing townhouses? Are you doing semis and where? And would you also do, address the setbacks from the? And would you also do address the setbacks from the property lines?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I did submit some presentation materials that are available on the AIC, but I can, maybe if they were pulled up, I'm able to to walk you through the history of this. So this proposal was initially for 12 townhouses approved by the Ontario Land Tribunal on Settlement with City Council in October 2020. Since that time, there's been a number of policy changes that have taken place within the area. The site is located within an approved protected major transit station area and it's located just south of Danforth Avenue. Through OPA 778, which was recently adopted by council, Danforth Avenue is located within 500 to 800 meters of transit and is now there are policies that support taller buildings along Danforth Avenue then was originally contemplated at the time of this application. There is an approval for a nine-story building directly north of this site on Danforth Avenue, which received Committee of Adjustment approval from its prior six-story iteration. There's also been a number of initiatives through the multiplex program with the city of Toronto. So initially, the idea of this site was to serve as a slightly more intense use than the existing dwellings along Thora Avenue and Lucy, which were limited to two stories back in 2020. Since the multiplex regulations have now come into force, there are permissions for three to four-story multiplex dwellings along Thora and Lucy Avenue now. So the intent with this minor variance application is really just to update the site-specific standards to better align with current policy as it applies to the site and the broader area. The and as I had mentioned, it was initially approved for 12 townhouses. There was no limit on the number of units within the site-specific zoning bylaw. So by accommodating one additional story within each block on the site, there is a potential to revise to a stacked townhouse type unit or keep the current form of townhouses. There is really just a lot of uncertainty in the market right now with housing and there's a drive to provide just a little bit more flexibility for the owner and the developer to take this project through to construction. It does have site plan approval from the city of Toronto for the previous iteration, which we would propose to amend through a site plan amendment with city planning. All the setbacks on the site remain as previously proposed. The buildings stay in their current location. The landscape stays the same. There is a public easement which is going to be registered across the eastern boundary of the site, which will connect Lucy Avenue to the existing laneway with a new public walkway to help the residents on Lucy better access the transit Victoria Park Station. And all of that remains unchanged as part of this proposal. I did also just want to touch on the last variance, which was about the parking spaces. So the previous iteration had an underground parking garage proposed for 12 parking spaces for the units on the site. Under the recent changes to the Planning Act, and this is noted in my presentation material as well, but I'll take you through it. Section 34 points, sorry, section 34, 6, 1.1 of the Planning Act was amended by the province recently to prohibit the establishment of site-specific parking standards for properties located within protected major transit station areas, which the site is. And it also included a sub-regulation 1.2, which nullifies any existing minimum parking standard within a protected major transit station area. So variance number four is technical in nature related to the amendments to the Planning Act. And variances two and three are related to the increase in of 2.5 meters within the height shown on revised diagram five. The setbacks remain the same as shown on diagram five. And variance number one relates to the minor increase in GFA that would come from the addition of that partial fourth floor area. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Chair. Sir, since 2022, the city of Toronto, to your point, has not required the parking spaces. But I do want to ask, what about accessibility for somebody who does need to have a wheel trans pulling? Is that available?
Yes, so there will be two frontages on the site. So the site has frontage on Thora Avenue, which is where Wheel Trans was intending to serve the project as previously proposed, as well as within the laneway to the north. The parking garage previously designed was entirely underground, accessed by a ramp directly onto Thora Avenue. So Wheel Trans was always planning to access the site from the public right-of-way and it's not proposed that this site may end up with no parking. We're simply seeking the flexibility to have, to be able to proceed on that basis if required.
Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I had difficulty originally going through your reference to diagram number five. Now, diagram number five, you have, first of all, these are semi-detached, right?
No, sir, they were townhouses, so there was
Are detached?
There was an attached block of townhouses fronting Thora Avenue.
But I have written here semi-detached. Anyways, I'm moving on. Sir, when you had block A, B, C, D, whatever, you did not notify that one, that detail you did not provide in diagram number five. And all you are saying height is 12.5 and then you revise it to 10, right?
So the height that's currently permitted within each block is 10 meters and we're seeking a variance to increase that to 12.5 meters.
And then, I mean, details are so sketchy for me to read. But anyhow, I struggled hard to find out what is what. Now, that was the difficulty of GFA is too high, that is variance number one. Number four, parking is zero, and you also recently explained the reasons. My difficulty was not having detail and referring to number diagram number five. But in diagram number five, you did not identify to me on the schedule right here in front of me, which one is A, B, C, or D, whatever, so that I could understand what you're talking about.
I see. Maybe if I could have the presentation materials pulled up that were submitted?
Through the chair, we can't really, we can't pull up the presentation because it was submitted after the written submission deadline. But we do have, we do have the applicant's site plan package as well as the original bylaw that was approved and his cover letter, anything that was submitted with the application before the deadline.
Yeah, it is available on the AIC. So the the diagram five that is, applies to the site right now does not list blocks A, B, C, or D. It only sets out the areas of where height was permitted on.
With due respect to you, I was mentioning because you had explained in your application refer to diagram number five. So I had to go to diagram number five regardless where the informations were. I tried, I didn't find. Details were sketchy. In the later modified version, you have modified, amended, and I have noticed, thank you. But my concern is detail was sketchy. And also two variances, number one and four. Well, around number four, did you try transport services?
Yes, we've had discussions with city planning, forestry, transportation services. There are no objections to this application. Like I mentioned, there are changes to the citywide zoning bylaw as well as the Planning Act with respect to parking, and this is aligning with the applicable law of the Planning Acts.
Thank you.
Ms. McCauley?
Thank you. I'm still a little bit confused, but I'll gear it into you're proposing townhouses and stacked townhouses. When we look at building C, it says two to four units. Is that a stacked townhouse?
Yes, so this variance is granting the flexibility to either provide two or four units. So they could either be a traditional townhouse, so side by side, or they could be stacked, so two on the first and second floor and then two on the third and fourth floor.
Okay, so building C could be stacked townhouses or standard townhouses and building D is the same.
That's correct.
How do you get access to those if you need a vehicular access?
So vehicular access to the site.
C and D.
So C and D, vehicular access to the site, you can enter or you can park on Lucy Avenue and there's that public walkway I mentioned through the site that you walk to your unit.
Okay, so no vehicular access to building C or building D?
Not directly, no.
Okay. The other question I have is you have a three-meter setback from the, I guess it's the north, from the north property line. How, for building C and building D, how do you provide emergency access?
So emergency access, this was studied thoroughly through the site plan application. So for building C and D, the fire truck comes down Lucy Avenue, which dead ends into the area at the southern end of the site there. The fire truck parks on Lucy Avenue and it's accessible into block C and D. And like I said, there is a public walkway along the north side of the property where then the firefighters would access from Lucy into block C and D. For blocks A and B, emergency access comes from Thora Avenue and the public laneway.
So fire trucks would come from Lucy Avenue and park on Lucy Avenue presumably in front of building B and then try to bring their hoses to building C or building D. Is that correct?
In part, yes, but Lucy Avenue is actually at the top side of this drawing, if I can say it like that. So building B fronts onto a public laneway.
Yes.
Building A fronts onto Thora Avenue and then Lucy Avenue dead ends into the back of the site behind building D.
So staff, I guess we need to look at one of these.
Thank you, yeah, the location map is helpful here.
And where is Lucy Avenue then?
Lucy Avenue is the east-west street.
Okay, I see Lucy Avenue. And how would the fire truck get to building C, for example, from Lucy Avenue?
So building C and D are located in the skinny portion, if I can say that, in the north-south tailpiece there. So the fire truck comes down Lucy Avenue, it parks at the end of Lucy Avenue and then they access the site through there.
Okay, and if any resident needed to get to the property, they either can come from Thora Avenue through the north or come from Lucy Avenue walking through from the south?
That's correct. And not only residents of the site, but the, all along the eastern boundary of the site there, there'll be a three-meter-wide public right-of-way so that anyone from the neighborhood can also use that access to get better access to Danforth Avenue.
So I see you have a walkway on your site plan. That three-meter-wide walkway is going to be a public walkway?
That's correct. It's secured through a conveyance to the city of Toronto.
So if that's a public walkway, that would be publicly owned?
Yes.
Therefore, you need to change the setbacks?
Well, it's secured as part of
Because you wouldn't own that walkway?
So the diagram for which the setbacks apply to includes that walkway. It's shown on the area of road and laneway widens and area of pops. And the way the zoning bylaw works is it is written to say the setbacks apply as if no conveyance had occurred. And you can find that at section 10 of the site-specific bylaw, which, so it says, despite any existing or future severance, partition or division of the lands, the provisions of this bylaw apply to the whole of the lands as if no severance partition or division occurred. So the setback is always measured from the current property line regardless of whether that walkway ends up, is conveyed.
So once you've conveyed that public walk, that walkway to the city, it's a public walkway?
Yes.
Anyone can use it?
Yeah.
But the setbacks will include setback from publicly-owned land as well as from the far boundary of that publicly-owned land?
That's correct. So the bylaw, because it shows the entirety of the site, will always measure the setback from the current eastern property line. And part of the site plan approval on this site is that my client and the owner will undertake to be responsible for the maintenance of that walkway, snow clearing, everything like that.
And is that the same situation as the walkway adjacent to the existing laneway?
That is a wide, that will be for a widening of the existing laneway. So laneways are required to be six meters wide. And the existing laneway is not quite six meters, so we're required to give a strip of land so that the city can implement the full six-meter rip. But yes, the setbacks are measured to the current property line.
Okay, Mr. Stinson, you have a question? Sure, let David ask. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, just by way of information, I cannot pull out in front of me now. Ontario Land Tribunal, OLT, their decision of August 31, 2023. Sir, I was reading, I'm seeking information through you kindly. I noticed during the reading that there were highlights missing information about zoning bylaws, date, and there was no signature. Had that been improved, signed, dated, and write information on the zoning bylaws?
Yes, so the decision, so the tribunal, there was a hearing in October 2020. They issued their decision to approve the zoning bylaw in February 2021 and they approved it subject to three conditions. So that we had to finalize the zoning bylaw. We had to submit a functional servicing report to make sure the site servicing was adequate. And we had to enter into an agreement for the design of that walkway so that the owner bore the construction costs. Once those conditions were satisfied, then they enacted the zoning bylaw in August 2023. So it did, it did take some time to get there from 2021 to 2023 to satisfy those conditions, but they have been satisfied and the zoning bylaw is in force and effect, yes.
So all those gaps have been rectified?
Yes.
Has it been signed?
There is a certified true copy available, I believe, at the city.
Would you be submitting or have you submitted that copy?
It should be available on the AIC, I believe.
Because I wouldn't get it. We had unsigned and all those are mentioned.
The bylaw that is attached to the tribunal decision is the enacted in-force bylaw.
Would you submit that copy?
I can make sure that that's resubmitted to the AIC so that it's available. But the bylaw that is attached to the OLT decision is the approved bylaw by the approval authority, the Land Tribunal.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate Ms. McCauley and Mr. Khan waiting into that. I just wanted to make sure that I understand. There is before us item number four and there was no objections from city staff, city departments, and this is in keeping with the site plan?
That's correct. It's taking the existing site plan and adding one floor atop it. That's all it goes to each building.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, let's take it into committee. Mr. Howe?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I think the applicant's agent did a good job presenting his rationale for this application. I want to emphasize in particular, the subject site is located in the proximity to a designated avenue and is located within the council-approved protected M T S A. And this is this is well-supported by Transit Service. As we learned, the latest P M T S A permits building of up to four stories as a right. As well, Bill one eighty-five recently received oil ascent in June twenty twenty-five, and this bill removes requirements of minimal parking. The effect of the minister's decision and the legislative change made by Bill one eighty-five is immediate. Therefore, the application before the committee, in my opinion, appears to comply with the existing law and provisional policy. The applicant advised his client has also received site plan approval for this development. And in light of all these, I feel it meets the four tests of the Planning Act, and I'm prepared to move approval of this application.
All right, if nobody has any other comments, Mr. Stinson? While I was just gonna, any other comments, Ms. McCauley?
I'm I'm just gonna comment. I have a great deal of difficulty with this application. I understand it's already been through a number of reviews. My difficulty really comes down to the lack of any vehicular access, especially emergency access, to buildings C and D. And I see that our variances do deal with building setbacks. So the building setback variance is an item that we can address. Lots of other things we can't address, it's already been approved. But I'm, I I'm just stating, I have some problems with this, and the problems are if if it's a variance, it's the problem of the building setback from the property line, which does not provide for public road access to building C and D.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Seeing none, Mr. Howe, you want to go ahead with your motion then?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. For all the reasons I stated previously, and for the reasons set out in the applicant's presentation and materials dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, I'm satisfied that this application meets the four tests of the Planning Act, and I will move approval of this application.
Okay, do I have a second or?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the application moved by Mr. Howe, seconded by Mr. Stinson, all in favor. Okay, and opposed? Okay, your application's approved, sir. Okay, item number five, eight fifty-one Brimorton Drive. We have before us a public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, revised variances dated October twenty-sixth, some photos of trees and the site, and we have planning asking for conditions. Is there anybody in the audience for eight five one Brimorton Drive? Okay, anyone other than the agent online? All right. We have, I believe it's ten variances before us. Okay, do I have the agent? Oh, sorry. I was I was thinking you were online, my my mistake. Okay, sir, go ahead. Okay, thank you, sir. Um, does anyone need a presentation, Mr. Deputy Secretary of Treasury?
Sir, Chair, can I ask the applicant? I know we have a, you you've submitted an amended application for item four, variance number four. You're requesting seventy-two point seven-five percent landscaping, but in brackets, is the is the decimal in the incorrect place? Okay. Eight eighty-seven point zero two, correct? Okay, good, we will capture that in the decision, but you've requested a you've requested, so you're requesting a further amendment for the record to eighty-seven point zero two square meters for variance number four, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? No? Sir, is there anything you want to add that's not in the materials before us? And just to confirm, so you're you amended the application for variance number four to seventy-two point seven-five percent, which is eighty-seven point zero two meter squared, and then variance number five, thirty-eight percent, which is fifty-four point four meter squared. And I don't, I believe that's it. So those are the two amendments, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, you have, Mr. Khan has a question for you.
Uh, Madam, through you, I'm simply asking information. Sir, I'm just contemplating on variance number four. Sir, you're saying side yard. Which side yard you have in mind?
Deciding number four?
Yes, sir, side yard you are saying. What is the side, one, two, three, four, north, south, east, west?
This is a uh facing on the other side of the road, I think.
Which side?
Brimorton.
Frontage backyard, northeast, west, one, two. Tell me the side.
No. Sir, do you know which side it is? Is it the north side, east side, south side, or west side?
It's in Brimorton side. What is that? It's north side.
North side.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, Mr. Colferos, is there anything else you want to add that's not in the materials before us, before we take it into committee for a decision?
No.
No, all right, we're in committee. Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair, sir, thank you for your presentation. I feel that this is a very straightforward application. And where there was concern by the city through community planning staff and department, he has, the owner has modified the application, so I would be prepared to put forth a motion to approve this application, subject to the recommendations of community planning.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Okay, do I have a second or for that motion? Okay.
I'll second the motion. All right, and it's, it is tied to the site plan?
Yep, he did say the planning report, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the application as amended. Variants four reads seventy-two point seven-five percent, eighty-seven point zero two meter squared. Variance number five, thirty-eight percent, fifty-four point four meter squared. And including the October twenty-eighth planning conditions. Application as amended moved by Mr. Stinson and seconded by Ms. McCauley, all in favor? That carries unanimously, your application's approved, sir. Thank you. Next item is item number seven, ten Bertrand Avenue. Okay, we have six variances before us, and we have the public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, presentation materials from the agent, as well as photos of trees and the site, I'm not seeing any other reports. And is there anybody in the audience for ten Bertrand Avenue? Seeing none, okay, is the agent on the line? Mr. Steven, Mr. Stevens?
Morning.
Hi, just need your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Brandon Stevens, I'm a partner with Johnson-Latowski Planning Consultants, and our office is located at three twenty Bay Street in Toronto.
Okay, panel members, this is for self-storage buildings, does anybody have any questions, Ms. McCauley, and then Mr. Khan?
Hey, I have a fairly simple question. It's, the question is, is this in an industrial area? Or is this in a residential area? Because it's not clear from the notice. Notice calls it I N G of community, which is, I'm I'm sure is pretty much incorrect. If it's an industrial zone, then are the adjacent buildings also industrial? That's all my question is.
Uh, through the chair, it's in an employment designation or employment zone.
Climate district, okay?
Yes, it is not residential.
Okay, and so the adjacent buildings are also industrial some sort?
Through the chair, that is correct, yes.
Okay, all right, a second question I have um, on this, he's asking for a variance for the landscaping strip, because they're proposing a three-meter-wide landscaping strip, which is fine, except they can't provide it in the corner where there is a transom. And obviously, they can't provide the landscaping strip where the driveway is either. Um, I guess this is a question related to staff, can we require approve of the landscaping strip, subject to the location of the transient and driveway? I'd, I, if we can, I'd really like to get the three-meter landscaping strip approved as it's being provided, rather than than delete the entire landscape strip, just because the corner has a transient and there's a driveway. Sorry, staff, I should have asked that earlier.
Um, through the chair, perhaps can we pull up the the site plan? So I think I think this is something, a question for the applicant, because it looks like, if you could zoom in on the, I guess where the landscaping is being, like where the where the variances being proposed? I'm not, I guess you could, if if you wish, you could tie it to to the lands, you can, you could tie it to the plans if you wanted to.
Well, it it seems that he's prepared to provide landscaping, and it's basically a technicality because of the transient at the corner that he's asking for the variance. So I would, I would like to word approval with provision of a three-meter landscaping, with the exception of the the transformer and the driveway, rather than give a variance to delete all landscaping.
Through the chair, you may wish to ask the applicant.
Okay, is the applicant, yes, could I ask the applicant whether he's okay with that? That's what your plan shows, you're showing that you are providing landscaping.
Uh, through the chair, we have no concerns tying the approval to the plans. As shown on the plans, that is our intention to provide that three-meter landscaping buffer, as is shown on the plans. We simply trigger this variance because of, as you said, the location of the transformer at the far eastern end of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Sir, I'm going to ask where is number four and number five combined? Sir, in number five, the requirement of the loading docks is length is supposed to be seventeen meter. But you are providing, sir, three B-type loading spaces, and the length is eleven feet, eleven meter, which is a little deficient, but nonetheless, you are providing three. So I'm taking this one to number four. Sir, did you seek transport services certificate?
Uh, through the chair, so this application, this minor variance application, we worked with staff on and have their support. I'll note that staff, including transportation services, have reviewed the application, and they have not written a report, whether that's city planning, transportation services, development engineering, et cetera. There are no staff reports noting objections or concerns from staff. We've also gone through an extensive review process with city staff for a corresponding site plan application. And staff, to answer your question, are supportive of the proposal.
Sir, I asked this question on the basis that you are providing fifty-seven spaces. Requirement is sixty-nine. So that is what generated this question in my mind that I should ask whether you were in touch with the transport services, and they had any comments? Well, I don't have. Nonetheless, thank you for your information.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, did you want to add something, Mr. Stevens?
I just wanted to clarify about the loading variance. You were, sir, you were asking about the width and the length, the size, of the loading spaces. So we're seeking a variance to provide three loading spaces instead of two, but smaller loading spaces that are more, much more appropriate, I would say, a size for this self-storage use that is the public, rather than industrial clients are using. So a type A loading space will serve as very large vehicles, specifically an eighteen-wheeler tractor-trailer. And that's not, as you can appreciate, I'm sure, what members of the public who are customers of a facility like this are using to bring their goods to store at a facility like this. So that's the reason for the variance, so that it's a much more appropriate size for this particular use.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, panel members? Mr. Deputy Secretary of Treasury?
Through the chair, if the if the committee does approve the application, we will ensure that the correct zoning bylaw is referenced in the notice of decision as a technical amendment.
Okay, thank you. All right, panel members, we're in committee, Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair, this is a sea of concrete. This this proposal is already situated in a sea of concrete of mid to high industrialization. It has a green belt at the back for hydro access that is quite substantive. I do appreciate Ms. McCauley's effort to get us a little more green out front, and that was upheld by the agent. So I would recommend that this application be approved, and I would be willing to put forth a motion.
Mr. Stinson, would you be able to, would you tie it to site plan? That would ensure what Ms. McCauley was trying to achieve.
I would move that we approve the application, tying it to site plan and the technical amendment of.
The the correct zoning bylaw, that that will be referenced in the in the notice of decision. The the correct zoning bylaw, that that will be referenced in the um in the notice of decision.
Thank you, Mister Treasurer, yes.
Alright, do I have a second or Ms. McCauley?
Okay, um. We can tie it, uh there is a site plan for this application, is there? Okay, alright, then uh I will second it that we tied it to this, to the site plan. And that will deal with the landscaping, we don't have to change the wording, okay, I'll second the motion.
Alright, okay, so the motion to approve the application, tying it to site plan is moved by Mister Stinson, seconded by Ms. McCauley, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number eight. Five-five-four-four Lawrence Avenue East. We have before us a public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, photos of tree and site. Planning justification by the uh by Mister Pierrotzi, a report from planning asking for refusal. We have thirty form letters in support uh from owners on Goldberry Square, Conference Boulevard, Tassan Place, Pollander and many other streets in the area. And I am showing only the agent as a speaker, I believe. Um is there anybody in the audience for fifty-five forty-four Lawrence Avenue East? Okay, do we have the agent on the line? And we have one variance before us.
The chair, Carlo, please unmute your mic.
Mister Pierrotzi? If you can hear me, I believe your mic is muted on your end.
Through the chair, um through the agent, please unmute, please unmute your microphone, please, so we can get started. Through the chair, uh Carlo's dropped off, so.
Okay, can we hold that item and we'll go to number nine? Okay, we're gonna hold item number eight. Uh which is fifty-five forty-four Lawrence Avenue East and we are going to go to item number nine. Which is thirty-eight thirty-seven Lawrence Avenue East. And. Alright. So we have before us a public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, um and some photos of the site and trees, we have two variances before us. And this is to construct an accessible lift at the back of the church. And I believe, is there anybody in the audience for thirty-eight thirty-seven Lawrence Avenue East? No, do we have the agent for this one on the line? Yep, okay. Mister Horvath, are you there?
Through the chair, good morning, yes, I am.
Great, can I just have you state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh sure, uh so my name is Julius Horvath. And my address is twenty-five Bonny Meadows Drive, Aurora, Ontario.
Thank you, sir, um don't think we need a presentation, does anybody have a question? No? Sir, we're ready to take this into committee for a decision, is there anything you want to add that's not in the materials before us?
Um no, I don't have anything else to add, it's it's pretty obvious, it's a it's a minor uh a minor impact on the site.
Okay, thank you, okay, Mister Khan, you seem very eager.
Well, it's a matter of choice, so I respect. Madam, uh two variances, very simple, minor in nature, so I move this application be approved.
Alright, and Ms. McCauley?
I will second it, I want to uh just comment, this is a really minor uh uh variance. Point zero-two of a meter, I think it's that wide. But.
So you're seconding the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Alright, we have a motion to approve the application, moved by Mister Khan, seconded by Ms. McCauley, all in favor? That carries unanimously, sir, your application is approved.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, you're welcome.
Through the chair, uh Carlo is back on, so we can circle back.
Going back to item number eight, fifty-five forty-four Lawrence Avenue East. Um so I'm not gonna read everything again, we have thirty form letters in support and we have a refusal from community planning on this one, so Mister Pierrotzi, are you there? Sir?
Yep, I'm here.
Great, um I just need your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Carlo Pierrotzi of uh four sixty-seven Spears Road in Oakville, uh P and P Consulting.
Okay, sir, you're aware of the planning refusal report?
Yes, I am.
Can you just speak to that? Why do you think we should consider approving it?
Well, I'm just gonna read something we prepared. Um we are requesting a variance permit to conversion of an existing commercial unit within a one-store plaza. Into an indoor recreational facility containing nine golf simulators. The proposal consists strictly of interior renovations, there are no changes to the building's footprints, elevations, sites, layout or parking supply, and the use is fully contained indoors. The property is designed neighborhoods under the City of Toronto official plan and zone CL zero dot four X twenty-eight under zoning bylaw five six nine dash two zero one three. While the zoning permits a range of neighborhood-serving commercial activities, the specific recre- recreational use requires relief apart from the use itself, the proposal is fully compliant with all existing zoning standards. This is a low-impact appointment-based. Sorry, this is a low-impact appointment-based recreational use that will activate a currently vacant unit and support local economic activity. And provide a unique year-round amenity to support to the c- community. I just want to mention that this is a family-oriented business, this gentleman has a proven track record of success in a nearby location. Uh these golf simulators are very popular these days. And um we did submit a planning uh brief in support of our application. Um I think it's a straightforward, common-sense application that is fully supported by the community, therefore, I request that the committee approve this application.
Thank you, sir, let me see if there are any questions, Ms. McCauley?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to speak to the matter.
Okay, you can do that when we go in committee then, okay, anybody have any questions for the agent? Alright, let's take this into committee for a decision, then go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
Okay, thank you, if uh staff could bring up the um the land use map, um. The map that shows the the plaza and the surrounding uses. This is a, is an area uh that I'm quite familiar with, I think this plaza was probably built sometime in the seventies. And I note that there is a variance, uh not a variance, the the zoning bylaw excludes uh recreational uses and amusement devices. If you look at the map, what they're proposing to do is use the former beer store, which is at the tail end of this plaza. For nine golf simulator devices, everything will be indoors. I'm not sure why recreational uses were excluded at uh when this bylaw was done. As you can see, next door is the Port Union Community Recreation Centre. To the north of that is the tennis courts in Charlotte Town Park. On the other side is um Moat Collegiate. And to the south of that is the soccer field of Hen- Hancock Park. So there's recreational uses all around this, I I. This one is gonna be a commercial recreational use, but it's small, nine golf simulators, I understand. Uh people in the neighborhood, we've got thirty letters of support, so presumably, it's gonna be well-used, I hope. But nine at a time, it's not going to overload that plaza in any means. So I I'm prepared to recommend approval.
Alright, Mister Stinson?
Um Ms. McCauley has stole my thunder, well done. Um the City of Toronto explicitly includes martial arts as a type of recreational activity and sport. This plaza already contains a martial arts studio, so it's beyond this member's uh comprehension why it's a problem now to include, to Ms. McCauley's point, interior golf simulators. Uh that too is a recreational sport, so I would be in favor of the application, thank you.
Anyone else, any comments? Alright, I'll need a motion then.
I'll move approval of the application.
Okay, Ms. McCauley moves approval of the application, do I have a second or?
Uh second the motion, Chair.
Okay, have a motion to approve the application, moved by Ms. McCauley, seconded by Mister Stinson, all in favor? That carries, and Mister Khan dissents. Okay, so let me just switch files here. Okay, the next item is item number ten, Three Farmington Crescent. Okay, we have three variances before us. And we have also before us public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, and arborist report prepared by Thomas Watson Consulting. Arborist Inc., and I don't see any other uh reports, and I believe um we only have the agent online. And is there anybody in the audience for Three Farmington Crescent? Okay, could I have the agent, please?
Madam Chair and committee members, my name is Sabal Mathno from QBS Architects, I am the agent.
Okay, good morning, panel members, I don't think we need a presentation, do any of you have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, ma'am, is there anything you want to add before we take this into committee that's not in the materials before us?
No, Madam Chair.
Panel members, we're in committee, Mister Khan?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, uh I would like to move this application has three variances, minor in nature, and be approved.
Do I have a second or?
Thank you, Chair, I'll second the motion.
Motion to approve moved by Mister Khan, seconded by Mister Howe, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, item eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen were deferred. So we are now moving to item number fifteen. Which is eleven ninety-five Pharmacy Avenue. Uh we have three variances before us, we have a public hearing notice, a location map, plan of survey, previous decisions affecting the property. We have photos of the site and trees, uh we have a refusal report from planning. And I believe that is everything, and let me just go to my speakers list here, alright. So anybody here for eleven ninety-five Pharmacy Avenue? Anyone on, okay, uh do we have the agent on the line?
My name is Minui Saberi, eleven ninety-five Pharmacy Avenue. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, sir, you're aware of planning, is re- recommending refusal, can you speak to the refusal report, please?
Yes, so uh the the plan, uh there, the main uh house in this property was built long time ago. So when I did the uh second floor and the main drawl, I had to keep the main walls around because of the. Um the the house was built, I didn't wanna uh damage the the existing property. Uh the property is built to the back side of the. Uh the the main drawing is built in the back of the property and the front of the property, I have a lot of room. Which there was a garage there, and I requested for a garden suite. That was approved and I already uh give it all to my family, which they were in a Toronto city housing. Um I already give them a recommendation, they're living there. I have my other family coming over and I wanted to see if I can put a modular home in the front. Uh which accommodate them living there. Uh the main concern I believe they have is because I'm 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 putting the module home in the front of the property. And also the setback from the road is a little bit, um because of the trees that I have. Um is a little bit to the, I'm I'm not meaning the required setbacks. And um. The 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 module home is already built, uh if you can see in the pictures that I submitted. The 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 property is sloped down, so from the road, it's not really visible. And also, it's the the uh the module home is modern. Uh one side of the proper, one one side of the module home is all glass and there is no door. The picture that I submitted, there is a door, if you look, which that door is not gonna be there, so the door gonna be toward the house. So from the road, it's not really visible, I spoke to my neighbors, uh they are okay with it. They they don't have a complaint about it, um that's it. That's all information, if you have any question, I'm glad to answer, please.
Well, I think based on what I'm reading in the planning report, it's a bit of a double whammy, because you're only allowed one garden suite for starters and you're putting a second one in. And then you're also putting it, even though they do acknowledge you're in a, your front yard's a bit of a unique situation, you're not allowed to have them in the front yard. So it's not really just, it's not really about the setbacks or any, it's more about, you're kind of violating the intent of of the garden suite bylaws.
Right, but.
In in two ways. So the the intention was not to have more than one garden suite on on a property.
Yes, this is the new thing that came to Ontario and I spoke to Premier's office. Um it's, um I don't know, the new law allows a garden suite and module home in City of Toronto, this does not have a foundation. So.
Uh I, well unfortunately, I don't know about my other members, but I've never heard of that before, so as far as I know, it's only one. Uh one per property, but Mister Stinson has a question for you, sir.
Go ahead.
Actually, I'll wait till we're in committee, I have a comment.
Okay, does anybody else have a question about this? Okay, sir, is there anything you want to add before we take this into committee for a decision?
Um yeah, yes, again, the the um I understand that the planning considers this as a second garden suite. But um on my research with uh Ontario housing, the new Ontario housing that passed twenty twenty-four. It's allowed to, uh one residential home can have a garden suite and a module home. That's what the information said, sent to me and I submitted it. Um two days ago, so um that on base of this document, on the base of this information that I have. I submitted this request, this application to Committee of Adjustment.
Alright, sir, but you had a zoning review done, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, the variance, the variance clearly states that, you know, you're you're only allowed one, one garden suite. And um it does even have in brackets. And it does even have in brackets, module home, so I don't know who you spoke, we're the municipality, not the province, so I'm not really sure who you were talking to at the province.
Yes, but again, the new policy for the new law, that one residential drawing can have a garden suite and a module home is allowed to have.
Well, we've never heard of this, sir, nor the members, nor the staff. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not sure who told you this, but we're not aware of this yet.
Okay, okay, am I able to pull the application, or is too late now?
Do you want to defer it, or you'd like to remove it? Let me ask staff. Maybe Deputy Secretary Treasurer, what's, what are his options?
Well, the option, through the chair, the options are, the application can be considered. A decision could be made to either approve or refuse it. Option two is the applicant can request a referral with a clearly stated reason for consideration by committee. Or option three is the applicant can withdraw the application.
Okay, so sir, those are your three options. You can either choose to have us make a decision on this, or you can ask for a deferral, or you can ask to have the application withdrawn today.
Okay, with the outcome, our conversation, I believe that I have to pull the application because I don't think that this is, I have enough documents as of now, until I collect more evidence that I can have one garden suite and one module home.
Okay, so you're choosing to withdraw the application or defer the application?
Well, what is the, what is the for?
Well, if you defer it, you, well, if you defer it, you have to give us a reason why you want to defer it. And then when you ask staff to bring it back on the agenda, it'll be put on a future agenda. I'm not sure, is there a timeline for that, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer? Like, is there a maximum timeline to come back?
Through the chair, there is not. But I just want to stress, the reason, the reason needs to be very clear, and the committee needs to make a decision on whether they wish to defer it or not, based on that reason.
Yeah, so you have to have a really good reason to defer. So usually, it's, you know, things that can be addressed through staff or community consultation. And Mr. Deputy Secretary?
Chair, I will like to add that this, this did, that this, this did proceed through a zoning review. This was reviewed by Toronto Buildings. They identified all the required variances. And you see, there's number one is the, it's clear that this is not currently permitted.
Yeah, I was trying to say that before, that it's clearly in the variances. It even has in brackets.
And if this were to be deferred, there's, there is no guarantee that it will ever be permitted. So.
So sir, yeah, I, maybe, I, well, it's up to you what you want to do, but you've heard the comments.
Please.
I'm sorry, withdraw it?
Yes, withdraw it.
Okay, so you're formally withdrawing your application now?
Yes, please.
That's it? Okay, sir, thank you. Item number sixteen. Um, yeah, actually, can we take a ten-minute break? Mr. Khan is, yes? Are you ready, Eric? Yeah? All right, panel members. Item number sixteen fifty-two, Blantire Avenue. We have before us a public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, revised variances, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, presentation materials, photos of the trees and site. We have reports from planning with condition and forestry are asking for condition number two. We have two form letters in support from adjacent neighbors at fifty and fifty-four Blantire, and correspondents expressing concern from number nine Windsor Avenue. Okay, you're the agent? Do we have the speakers on, on the line? Yeah, both of them? Okay. Okay, so we have two speakers online. Can I ask you just identify yourself and maybe do a very brief presentation, because we have a couple of speakers online?
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
My name's Chris.
Is the mic on? Yeah, the red button's on? Okay.
My name's Christopher McCormack. I'm an architect. I live in Cavish Town at four one five Sackville Street. I'm here as the agent today on behalf of a family that's lived here for over fifteen years. They have two sons, one in university and one in high school. And they are unfortunately not able to attend today because they're away supporting their younger son in a soccer tournament representing Canada. The reason why they engaged me to help them with their house is that they, they've taken note of the estimate in Toronto now that the average child doesn't leave home until they're thirty. And also that they have a parent aging in place who's moved in with them. And they've wanted to reconfigure the house, which is a very unusual nineteen eighties design with split floors on every level. And so we went through the whole process of doing a design, and we've been working for a couple of months with the planners to get through the zoning application. And then in presentation to the Committee of Adjustment, we responded to a couple of important points being made by the community planner about the height and about a platform on the third floor. We lowered the height of the house, and we used Surveyor to actually calculate the ridge of this house and the two neighboring houses, so that the three-dimensional drawings that were presented to you are accurate. And we lowered the proposed height of the ridge to the existing non-conforming height of the existing house. And we removed the platform at the back, so that there would only be one platform, not two. Again, a zoning provision that mattered a lot to the community planners. Otherwise, this is a house built on an unusual lot in an unusual configuration on the same footprint. And the several of the variances which you will have come to know are existing non-conforming elements. And so I'm presenting the presentation today, hoping that you will see fit to approve them as minor variances.
Okay, I just, before I go to the speakers, so this is a revised application. So I just make sure I can read my notes here. So your revised variance number one to ten point eight three meters. Then number five just had a typo where each platform is, is changed to a platform. Then number eleven is, they added soft in front of landscaping, and you're deleting variances four and six. Is that it?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at this application as amended today then?
Thank you.
So if we can go to the speakers now, that'd be great.
Hello?
Stuart Wallace here. My wife and I are the registered owners of adjoining property at seven Windsor Avenue.
Okay, sir, you have five minutes to state your concerns. Go ahead.
I, I think concerns will be expressed by another neighbor. My concern is, is there a tree report with respect to the trees at the back? My concern is, is there a tree report with respect to the trees at the back? Because the application calls for the construction of a pool. And secondly, there is a shed to be erected on the new, on the plan, the proposed plan, which will come up against the fence at the rear of our house and relocate it from the southwest corner where there are currently four sheds constructed together, which would just make a lot of sense.
Okay, the applicant will answer your questions after we hear from the second speaker, but I will just say that the city's forestry department does have a condition, so they have looked at the trees.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hello?
Hi, I just need your name and address for-
Yes, okay. It's Hillary Bowring. I'm at five Windsor Avenue, and I'm a neighbor going south. My garden goes south alongside, I'm at the end of the garden to fifty-two Blantyre. So it does affect me anything that changes on that property. And I'm completely in sympathy with the family wanting to change the organize, change their footprint because of the, you know, it's a very unusual family house, and they've got two boys, and the elderly woman staying there. However, my, I've got two concerns. One is the one that Stuart just mentioned about the trees, because there is in the application a plan for a pool, and we've got some very ancient trees here that need to be protected, and I'm not sure how that's going to happen. We've already lost a lot of the canopy in this area through sprinkles being built, and often the contractors have just paid the fine because it's not high enough. So that's one concern. The second concern is about the upper deck. Still, I haven't seen the revised version, but it was more in the original one, it was ten square meters. And at the very top, it would mean a lot of overlooking of all our properties, and it was more like a sky deck than a balcony. So I'm not sure if the adjustment addresses that concern about being very overlooked, because even though we all have balconies, we're all kind of at lower levels than that one. So that's my other concern is, you know, we all like each other as neighbors, but we don't want to be, we want to keep some privacy.
Okay.
That's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, we'll have Mr. McCormack's going to answer your questions.
Thank you all for coming forward with the questions. I know that my client is very interested in being part of the community and respecting everybody's interests. In terms of the questions that have come forward, the pool was proposed by Paige because she actually was on the national water polo team, and she was an international swimmer when she was young, and she's always had a dream of having a pool.
Is there any way you can get a bit closer to the mic? Or, I don't know, it's not-
Sub to the mic? That's better?
Which better?
I was just mentioning that my client was a swimmer in her youth, and she has had a dream of having a pool. There is no ambition to make any effort to injure those trees. It was located using the drawings that were prepared by a consultant that located the trees with the setbacks and the requirements and so forth. We will have to go through a permit process in due course, but there is no ambition to injure or remove any of the trees. With respect to the proposed shed, which would be for garden furniture and things like that, there already is one, and as was mentioned by the first speaker, there are several sheds on several properties that are all grouped together, and we could just as easily put it on that side of the property but for the fact that that would be within the circle around a tree as it is right now. The place that I had located it is free of that because I thought that that would make more sense to forestry looking at the application. In either case, it's not an invasive shed. It's within the limits of hundred and sixty square feet. It's within the height limits, and it's also set in from the property, all according to what would be the zoning rules that I'd be exposed to when I do a building permit application. And then the last comments was about the upper deck, which we've brought forward to this committee as being removed. There is no deck on the third floor.
Okay. Panel members, any of you have any questions? Who's McCormack? Mr. Stinson?
Thank you. Thank you so for your words. In the backyard, am I correct in what I'm seeing that there are some large trees, but there is a significant open and already clear-cut space there?
Yes, the, our clients were fortunate that whoever owned a house before them combined the two back lots of two houses, so it's a substantial property. It's open, it's tree-lined, and it's quite beautiful.
Thank you. One more question. There was a concern about, I heard the term from the woman with the British accent, sky deck versus balcony. Can you touch on that?
Well, ironically, the existing house has decks on the top floor that do overlook everybody, and they've been removed with this proposal. We instead had put a deck on the west side on the third floor, and that in turn has been removed in response to the comments from the community planner that I've been working with.
Mr. Khan?
Thank you, madam chair, through you. Sir, my question is very simple. I'm just asking it. My concern is you are having three stories, right? What it is because of height? And where is number one height you have modified to ten point eight-three? Still high than the maximum. Why three-story?
I started with the existing house on the existing footprint when we were-
Can't hear you.
Thank you. Sorry. I have to lean in a bit. The existing house has a partial third floor. And in the way that the house is laid out on this footprint, I encourage the client not to go further west into their back garden or further east, but to work with the existing footprint. And the family is two parents, two kids, and a mother. And so as it is right now, the ground floor is used for the family. The second floor has the two parents, and they have, they also work out of the house part of the time. And the third floor would be for their two sons.
Thank you.
Mr. Stinson?
Just to follow up with Mr. Khan, this is in the neighborhood of the beaches, the Falling Brook area. There is a significant grade drop and variations throughout. Is this one of the reasons that there are three-story buildings in this area?
That's a clever question, and I can't give you as good an answer. I've come to know the neighborhood from visiting over the last year, and the roads do go up and down, and the houses are all different heights, and there are several houses with third stories on Blantyre and many that only have two stories. But what I will say is that it's been excruciating for us to understand what established grade is, in quotes, with zoning, because actually the backyard is almost level, it's within six inches of level, and the ground floor of the house is only up three steps from that. But it's at the front going down to the street that there's a rather interesting effort for the car to get into the garage and steps to get up and all of that, and that's all on the east side of the building. And so when I first came to know the project, I didn't know where grade was. It was only when we started to use the Surveyor and to work with actual grades. It's a pretty flat site where it is.
Any other questions? Mr. Khan?
Thank you, madam chair, through you. Sir, I was just reading the variances, and number one got my attention now, that although the planning consultants have accepted with the condition, but your soft landscape is thirty-one point one-three percent, right?
I think it's currently eleven percent.
And can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Where is number eleven? Kindly take a look. You're providing front yard soft landscaping, thirty-one point one-three percent, right? So requirement is, or the zoning law is, requirement is seventy-five percent minimum. You are not halfway there. Justify.
It's an existing non-conforming situation that there is a garage and a driveway and steps up to the house. And currently, when we did our calculations, the front yard landscaping, soft landscaping was only eleven percent. So we've been able to increase it to about thirty percent. Okay, thank you.
I just want to ask, I think in your presentation materials, did you state variance one, three, five, six, and nine are all existing conditions? Unless I misread something?
I'm sorry.
So you had a number of existing conditions here. So now variance one, three, five, six, and nine, are they all existing conditions?
I-
Unless I'm-
Well, six is not, because that's the flat.
Yes, sorry, that's my mistake. So I probably added that one in, but you had a number of them that listed as existing conditions.
Because the building is actually a conventional length. It's within the seventeen meters that we're used to. It's just pushed back so far so it shows up as very long. And so that is two of the variances, the depth and the length. And the height we went back to, to respect that. I don't remember the other ones you mentioned.
I had, well, one, three, five, and nine, so it would-
Well, yes, and right now there are eaves on the existing house, and in fact, some of them have, we call them saddlebags, the nineteen eighties architect projected pieces out of the building. And so in many ways, the neighbors are going to benefit not only by having a completed and renovated house, but by the work that we're doing, the two side walls will be non-combustible, which they aren't right now. The windows and decks that look into the neighbors will be gone because of the respect for the regulations in zoning. And so there's a lot that will come out of this that I think are improvements.
Okay, any other questions? Ms. McColling?
Just, I guess, two comments. First, this is a very old area. I haven't seen a Keystone lot like this in a long time, but I know this is the beaches. I know it's south of Windsor, so it's very unusual. Planning staff are recommending that the landscaping in the front yard here be a permeable pavers. Can't read my own writing. Are you in agreement with that?
I've always wanted to do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, we're in committee. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, madam. I would like to move this application as recommended by the staff to be approved with conditions as amended, plus forestry conditions.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Khan moves a motion for this application as amended with deletion of variance four and six. Variance one is now ten point eight-three. Variance number five has a typo that changes each two up. And variance eleven adds soft in front of landscaping, and then he's also adding the community planning conditions in the October thirtieth report and forestry number two. Do I have a second there? Ms. McCollie?
I'll second that.
So that's moved by Mr. Khan, seconded by Ms. McCollie. All in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Item number seventeen, number two, Lovering Road. We have before us public hearing notice, a location map, plan of survey and plans, previous decisions affecting the property, photos of the site and trees, forestry is asking for condition number two, and we have an advisory report from Tree Protection. I, are you the agent, sir?
Yes, I'm the agent.
Okay, and there's no one online, right, for this? Okay, sir, just need your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Tom Chu. I'm from sixty-five M Lane Crescent, Scarborough, M Y S Y R Y.
Thank you, sir. Committee members, we have two variances before us. Does anybody have any questions for the agent? Mr. Stinson?
Thank you, Chair. Sir, are you aware of, unless I'm reading this wrong, urban forestry is requesting us to defer on this matter?
Through the chair. The, that, that report was superseded by the other report that's in the package.
Thank you very much, Deputy Treasurer, sir. Don't worry about that question.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have a question? I'm not seeing any questions, sir. We're ready to make a decision. Is there anything you want to add that's not in the materials before us?
No.
Okay, so we're in committee? Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This application's pretty straightforward, two variances. They appear minor and meets the four test of the Planning Act. I would move approval of this application subject to urban forestry condition.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, just for a point of clarification, there are no urban forestry conditions. I'm so sorry. It's an advisory memo, and that's it. So there are no conditions.
I'll retract the urban forestry condition, just the approval of this application.
There is. So if I may, Chair?
Through the chair, if you wish, we can put up the memo so everybody has it.
They changed the location of the building so they saved the tree in the previous application.
Thank you, Deputy Treasurer, and if you will allow, Madam Chair, when you're ready, I would like to pursue that then with the-
We're out of committee. Go ahead.
Okay, sir, just once in a while I do get a boomerang back, so here's it. Are you aware of urban forestry's deferral request in regards to your applications?
Yes, we have.
Well, that's how it's written on our paperwork, sorry.
Through the chair, there are two memos that are in the, there are two memos in the, in the package. Ignore the first one because that got superseded. The second one is the one that's on the screen right now, which is just an advisory, just an advisory memo.
So, sir, are you aware that forestry has sent an advisory memo that because of the location of the driveway, which would require the removal of a city-owned tree, and they will refuse removal of the tree because of the driveway, because it's a healthy tree? So they want you to relocate the driveway. Have you been in conversation with them at all about this?
Not yet.
So-
We want to apply to remove this tree.
Yeah, they're, they have already said they will not let you remove the tree. In this, in this memo that's up on the screen, I know it's small print, but they have clearly said that they will deny your request for removal of the tree. Have you considered a deferral, sir, to talk to forestry so you can perhaps redesign the location of the driveway so that you can save the tree? Because they're not going to allow you to remove the tree.
We don't have any chance to relocate our driveway. We only have this driveway here.
Well, have you, have you even tried to, hmm? Have you even tried to flip it to the other side? Like, I mean, I'm just telling you that even if, even whatever happens here today, forestry will deny removal of the tree. That's all I'm saying, which is not part of this committee's jurisdiction.
I will discuss with the Ministry of the Forestry to discuss if we can remove that tree. I still hope you approve our minor variance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. In light of the memo and the refusal to have the tree destroyed by urban forestry, I could not approve this application. I cannot. I would vote against it, and I just want that to be known. Thank you.
So, sir, you have a couple, oh, Mr. Howe also has a-
Sir, can you advise if there's a way you could build a house without removing the tree? Is there an option that you could proceed with that option?
We must pull to the driveway there. We can, we don't have any other options.
Could you, is injury or avoiding it? Because the way I see the site plan, it's not, your driveway is not- There's an approach on the route, right?
Maybe we can make the driveway smaller to avoid this tree.
So, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, I want to hear if you have ways to, given urban forestry's condition- So, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, I want to hear if you have ways to, given urban forestry's condition, that they will not allow, they just already said that they will not allow you to remove that tree. So if, if you were asking us to approve, what I, what I would like to hear is if you're able to comply with that condition.
We will make the driveway smaller to avoid this tree.
Well, I'm of the opinion that, you know, this could require some changes that I, I think it might be in your best interest to go with a deferral and see how I, I, I mean, it's up to you, sir, if you want to. If you want to ask for a deferral, to have discussions with forestry and see how you can relocate your driveway, or you, or we can make a decision today. You've heard from one.
If you make the decision today, are you going to approve us or not?
Well, I can't tell you that, sir, but you've heard from one member who's already said he hasn't, he doesn't support it. But no, we can't tell you what we're going to do before, you know, I think the decision. You've kind of heard the comments and questions, so it's up to you to make a decision. You know forestry is not going to allow you to remove the tree, regardless of what decision you get.
Maybe we need to defer this, this application. We will discuss with the Ministry of the Forest, Forestry.
Okay. So you would like us to consider a deferral so you can have consultation with the forestry department?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Mr. Howe, do you want to change your motion to defer? Oh, I thought, I don't know why I wrote you down, maybe because we were, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will move the furlough of this application at the request of the applicant in order for them to discuss with the urban forestry on their condition.
Okay, do I have a second?
Chair, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer the application to enable the agent to consult with forestry, moved by Mr. Howe, seconded by Mr. Stinson. All in favor? That carries unanimously, sir.
Okay.
Please contact forestry and have some discussions and maybe before you talk to them, have a look at your plans and see what you can do with the driveway first, and then go and talk to them. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, the final item this morning is item number eighteen, six Haleybury Drive. We have before us public hearing notice, location map, plan of survey and plans, photos of the trees and site, reports from community planning, asking for a condition, forestry is asking for condition number two. And TRCA and Ravine and Natural Feature Protection just had advisory reports. We have a five signature petition in support, signed by residents on Haleybury, including number four and eight, which are both adjacent neighbors, and number one and two Deerfield Road. And we have, I believe, two variances before us. I don't show any other speakers other than the agent. And there's nobody else here to ask. So do we have the agent on the line?
Hello, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Max Shot Menchison from Permitment, located at one hundred eighty West Beaver Creek Road. And I'm here today on behalf of the owner of the property located at six Haleybury Drive.
All right, I don't think we need a presentation on this today. Panel members, do you have any questions? You're aware of the community planning condition?
Yes.
Okay, as well as, as well as forestry condition, right?
Yes, we are aware of both conditions.
I don't see any questions, so unless there's something you want to add that's not in the materials before us, we're ready to make a decision on this.
I can present my proposal, but if you, if you don't have any question, it's up to you. I can, I can.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need a presentation.
Okay, perfect.
So, okay. All right, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. We have two agents in front of us, minor. Therefore, I move and I take the recommendation from the staff approved with conditions and forestry conditions.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Khan, including the planning conditions on the October twenty-seventh report and forestry number two. And Ms. McCollie is seconding that motion. All in favor? Your application is approved, ma'am. All right, committee stands adjourned until one thirty.